Well, actually, Oden, Mike is East Coast, but she's updated.
Good evening. We've met in closed session. We have a forum, so we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to start with the approval of minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from April 7th, April 18th, April 18th, May 2nd, and May 9th?
Could I ask to have the April 18th meetings withheld from that approval because I wasn't there? I would be, I would have to abstain for the rest.
Okay, we can do that.
If we could do that, thank you.
So, do we have a motion then for April 7th, May 2nd, and May 9th?
So moved.
Mike moves.
Second.
Julia, second.
Mike Davenport.
Hi.
Julia Beckman.
Hi.
Deb Boyle.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
Terry Pavisic.
Aye.
Rick Pavanado.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka.
Aye. They pass, and then we have approval of the minutes from April 18th. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mike moves.
All second.
Terry seconds.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Terry Pavisic.
Aye.
Rick Pavanado.
Aye.
Julia Beckman.
Abstain.
Deb Boyle.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka.
Aye. It passes. Thank you. We'll move to the first reception of visitors. There are, the meeting agenda includes two opportunities for comments from the audience. This first reception of visitors is intended for audience members to address the board about any agenda item by which the vote, on which the, on which the board will vote. Does anybody who'd like to address the board? Hearing none, we'll move on to the recommendations and report of the superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Cupka. The first report, actually, the first two are related. The first report is about the meeting of Parent and Teacher Advisory Committee on April 7th. This is a board committee. We met for the inaugural time on April 7th. It's probably a committee that'll meet every year, but not more than once a year. Mr. Wugetzer, Assistant Superintendent, was there to record the events, and he's going to make a presentation to the board about what occurred at the meeting.
Thank you. Well, I just wanted to give kind of a quick update on the work we've done this year. We've collaborated, we're collaboratively with our school administration and staff. We've had over 14 meetings so far this year. Some of them have been, many of them have been internal meetings that we've had, but we've also been to the DePage ROE. We've done some other networking meetings. We've been to some legal seminars to kind of address SB 100. So, I wanted to thank Kristin Borman, Luque Mastodemas, Vince Walsh-Rock, and Sherry Devores Benitez because they put a lot of work and effort into those meetings that we've been going through this year. I'm not going to highlight or go through the highlights that I put in the memo. Dr. McDonald addressed those, I think, a few meetings back, but what I wanted to share with you is that one of the network meetings that we attended, we had two of our state senators there that kind of went through, that were kind of the authors of this SB 100, and they kind of went through their insights on why they did it and things like that. So, that's why I put the first bullet point about the looking at the civil rights data that the schools submit. So, we've had a lot of feedback from outside of the, you know, the district as well as our work internally, and that obviously leads us to the Parent Advisory Committee meeting that we had on April 7th. The structure of our meeting is we went through some background information with the parents that Dr. McDonald, Luque, and Kristin kind of provided, and then what we did is we had our deans present some scenarios to the parents, and then after that, we did a cooperative learning group where we broke into three different groups. We had 12 parents there, and we had six and six, six from north, six from south, so it was a great breakdown. Although it was, you know, a smaller group, it was actually a really productive and meaningful night that we had. We kind of phrased our cooperative groups into four questions. I kind of, kind of put them together based on the responses that we had, but one of the final activities that we did is we actually did a question and answer. So, all the things that I'm going to address, we actually addressed with our group that night. But questions one and two really asked for what additional information or data, you know, would they think we might need to look at? And a lot of it was focused on communication, like what is the purpose of the law? You know, how is the discipline going to change? How are we going to communicate to our students and our community? What is the impact on students with disabilities? How are we going to go about training our staff? What types of resources? That was a huge focus in terms of how are we going to use the county, the township? Is our staff prepared to handle this? They referenced the early warning system that we presented to you a while back, and different interventions we talked about a little bit. And obviously, one of the biggest challenges that we're always faced with, how do we continue to increase our community and parent involvement? So, that was part of questions one and two. And then question three really looked at suggestions for implementation from our parents. They asked about, you know, how can we make sure we provide clear communication about individualized approach to discipline, to the students. Proactive interventions, they, we talked a lot about that. Again, increased parent involvement, how do we continue to do that? And they, we did spend a lot of time talking about Mustang Way and Positively North, and how are those programs helping to support our students? And then we talked a lot about in-school suspension use as opposed to the out-of-school suspensions, and how can we be, have that be a positive approach? And then one of the parents asked for like an abbreviated handbook. They said the handbook's too big, and how can we have maybe a condensed version of that to be able to understand it a little better? And then our last question really focused on kind of our, what did the parents see as, as positive, kind of present and current levels of what I call performance of our school? And I honestly, there probably would have been a lot more, but we focused so much on questions one really for a long time. But they did appreciate the help that was always provided by staff. They noted that. And then they talked about that they appreciated the way special education placement and identification occurred. So, we had a really wonderful night. I know Julie was there for that.
She was.
A number of administrators and our deans and that participated, so we were really excited about the event. Our question and answers actually went really well. Sometimes you're worried about, you know, is anyone going to step forward, and they really went through all their list of questions and provided some great feedback. So, we were really excited about it. They did ask, like Dr. McDonald just stated, that are we going to continue something like this? And that's our goal, is to continue with that. So, overall, we were really excited about the night. So, if you have any other questions about that?
Great.
All right, and our second part was really having, I think Ed is going to present just a quick summary of the proposed changes for our student handbook for next year.
Well, I'm here on behalf of Kristin and Luque. Normally, every year we come and give you changes in specifics, do's and don'ts. I'm excited. This year, there's very few changes. Most of our changes are to meet the law of Senate Bill 100. You know, over the years, you've seen the changes in cell phones and e-cigarettes or whatever the changing, the one thing we do, we added hopper boards being on here.
Good move.
So, that's about the extent of the additions that way. I know you all have the highlighted 22-page discipline code, so I'm not going to go through that one by one. Predominantly, it's changing the wills to mites, and instead of if a specific then gives a range, the suspensions could be in-school, out-school. So, our teams have already started this year, bringing kids back from out-of-school suspension sooner, combining with some in-school punishments and some other interventions. And with two new people at both campuses, Janice and I are both excited to work with them this summer to get things in place so we can build more interventions for our kids and keep them in school. So, unless you have other questions, it's very straightforward, and you all have them in your reports. The highlighted changes are there. So, I'm available if you have any questions.
I just wanted to add, just to get back on that to what, to the parent meeting, this is what the parents were so happy about, is that there's far fewer out-of-school punishments. And it's surprising, you might think parents would really want to take a tough line and et cetera, but no, they really want, wanted the kids to be in school and have much more appropriate interventions and actually be doing their work, and so I know they're going to be happy to see this, I think.
Thank you.
Good job.
Freedom of information requests?
I'll second.
Thank you, Dr. Cupka. The District 99 received two freedom of information requests this past month, and both were fulfilled by Mark Stain and Leonard.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, is there any item that any member of the board would like to remove from the consent agenda? Hearing none.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Terry Pavisic.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
Rick Pavanado.
Aye.
Julia Beckman.
Aye.
Deb Boyle.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka.
Aye.
It passes. Thank you very much. Recommendations for action? Approval of the student discipline code?
Thank you, Dr. Cupka. That is the code that was presented to you in writing, and described also by Mr. Wugetzer and Mr. Woods. We asked the board to approve the code because once it goes in the handbook, then it become, has a weight of policy. And it's really good to have discipline policy versus school rules.
I move to approve the changes to the student discipline code as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mike and Julia.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Julia Beckman.
Aye.
Thank you. Deb Boyle.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
Terry Pavisic.
Aye.
Rick Pavanado.
Aye.
Nancy Cupka.
Aye. Carrie, so thank you. Approval of the 1617 Board of Education meeting calendar?
Thank you, Dr. Cupka. This is a relatively traditional meeting calendar. And generally speaking, the third Monday of the month is the board's business meeting. The first Monday of the month is workshop meeting. Where we deviate from that are months we have Sunday holidays early in the month.
I move to approve the 201617 Board of Education meeting calendar as presented.
I'll second that.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Deb Boyle.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
Terry Pavisic.
Aye.
Rick Pavanado.
Aye.
Julia Beckman.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka.
Aye. It passes. Thank you. The approval of the 1718 school calendar?
Thank you, Dr. Cupka. This is the, virtually the same calendar that we discussed with the board at the workshop meeting. This is, it is historic in the sense that it ends the first semester prior to the winter holiday break. To my knowledge, it's the first time that District 99 has had such a calendar. It has the first day of school on Friday, August 18th, which has always been a split day, the upperclassmen in the morning and the freshmen in the afternoon. It has 85 days in the first semester. It has 89 days in the second semester. Although, as we discussed during the second semester, we have the law of road testing, which takes several days typically. Holiday break is scheduled for the end of the school day on December 21st, although if we have a bad weather day and have to reschedule a bunch of exams for the following day, we have that option. And because we put it on December 22nd, the holiday break will then run until through Friday, January 5th, and we will begin school for the second semester on January 8th.
I move to approve the 201718 school calendar as presented.
Second. Terry, second.
Terry, you have just a brief discussion?
We could indeed.
So, with that, that emergency day on the 21st of December, one of the things we did tonight in the consent agenda was to forego the emergency days at the end of the school year for this past, or for the year we're in right now. At what point do you think we might do that for that December 21st date? That's a little tricky, right?
Yeah, it is tricky because it could be snowing on that day.
Not quite sure when, well...
We've got time to work it out.
We could approve it, the meeting, what is the December 18th is our meeting, and we can...
In terms of not having school on that day, I don't think it's necessary to approve it being on this day.
Oh, correct.
It's there in the case we need it.
That's true.
And we don't need to use it. I think the approval, ultimately, the approval of the calendar without the emergency days can likely take place at the same time.
Okay.
But we will check that because...
Might need to approve having school that day.
Pardon me?
Maybe we'd need to approve having school that day.
Probably not logistically possible.
Right.
Given the point of that is unusual, well, 21 months since I've been superintendent, we have a snow day right before the holidays.
The only thing I'd like to visit is graduation, and I know we had talked about maybe because we would be graduating on that Friday, maybe do it on a Saturday.
I think that part of what we discussed at the workshop was we established committees to, to look at the recommendation on that, but we wanted to do that.
Right.
Yeah, I think that that's a good idea.
Ultimately, one of the things about this, I think, that we all understand is that we're, we're also taking the, I don't know that we've ever approved a calendar this far in advance either. I mean, so knowing that we're 15 months ahead of schedule, or for the, or at least before this calendar would be implemented, that there's probably some adjustment or tweaking that might happen as a result of...
And we're approving a draft.
So, good point. Yes.
Any more discussion?
I just, I'm going to be voting in opposition of the calendar, as probably doesn't come to a surprise to the rest of you, but I thought I'd just give a brief explanation, just for the record. I, I think, you know, after going through the survey process, you know, the majority of the residents, the students, and the collective body that we surveyed were in support of it, roughly about 60 to, 60% to 40%. So, and then in speaking with a bunch of the constituents in my area and peers in the community specifically, I got a feeling that the people who, who I tend to represent were against the early start calendar. As, as we've gone through this process, I haven't really been convinced that this is really a need. I, about the only solid justification that I've heard is the benefit for AP classes and getting more instruction prior to giving out the AP exams. But on the flip side, I haven't really heard of a problem that we're having in performing negatively or performing poorly on the AP exams under the current structure. In my mind, if we were going to change the calendar, I would rather start after Labor Day and push back the calendar. I feel strongly that starting school in mid-August takes away from probably one of the best months for family time and family vacation. I value and respect the opinions and recommendations from District 58 and the Woodridge Park District. I, I think this is a trend in education, and I'm not, I'm not one to be influenced by trends. So, I, that's the basis for my, my vote tonight. I certainly respect the opinions of all of you on this board, and certainly the opinions of the community, but the community spoke 6 to 4. So, for us to vote unanimously, I don't, I'm not sure that that's a true representation of, of our community either. So, I just wanted to give all of you an explanation of why I'll be voting no for tonight.
Thank you, Don. And I would just add that I would rather, so you vote with your conscience and go along with the crowd, and I probably speak for...
I would like to clarify one thing, though, and I do believe that the reason for this calendar wasn't for the extra days for AP. The original reason for looking at this calendar was so that our students would finish their finals before the winter break.
Yeah.
That was the reasoning behind this.
I know, but in my mind, that's not really justification for moving the exam. I don't really see that as a problem. You know, they, they either have a week and a half or two and a half weeks after Christmas break to study for exams before they take their exams. In my mind, that's really not that big of a deal. And, you know, I don't see that as major justification for moving our calendar and taking away from family time, in my mind.
Well, I'll say, this is for next year, so everything, we, you know, this is some, one thing we learned in this process is that it's, it's a good idea to rethink the calendar from time to time and have continued discussion about it. So, we're approving the calendar for next year, not, or the following year.
Yeah, the following year.
Not this coming year, for those at home. But there's nothing to say that we, we might revisit this yet again. And I'll just throw out, you know, one of the notions that I'm hoping that'll be explored going forward is, is whether or not, you know, what, whether or not we need to continue having final exams in all classes at all times. And in fact, if, if that's something that down the road, we, we look at, at, at that, that might yet allow us to, to change the calendar yet again, more in favor of what you're suggesting. So, so this is for the 201718 school year, and we'll see how it goes, and we'll see the result. I did anecdotally, I, I had an opportunity in this last week to go to the Attainable Futures luncheon with some of our staff, and I talked to a number of students there, and unanimously, every single student I talked to about this, I brought it up, and every single one said yes and thank you. So, so I, that, that resonated with me as well. But I, I hear what you're saying. I mean, and surely, there, there's a number of people in the community that would rather us not do this, and it makes sense that you'd be voting, as a, as a, as a point to be made, that not everybody agrees with us, so...
But, but I do think it would be wrong to instill the idea in people's heads that we would capriciously go back to the old schedule.
I don't want...
So many, so many, you know, there's a domino effect.
So, if you took what I said to, you know, intimate that, my, my, I opened by saying that this is something that we were going to look at, again, that we were going to look at yearly, I think. It's something that, it's something to consider. It's opposed to just automatically doing it.
Renewing it.
And, and certainly, since this is the first year we're doing it, I'm interested in hearing some feedback about how it, how it goes. So, but yes, don't want to give people the notion that, hey, we're going to keep...
Back off.
You know, like back when Thanksgiving used to, I guess, years and years ago, it used to be on different Thursdays in whatever state you're in or whatever.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, back in the 30s or 40s, so...
No, I wasn't either.
Yeah, so...
So, any other comments? Motion's on the table?
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Terry Pavisic.
Aye.
Rick Pavanado.
Aye.
Julia Beckman.
Aye.
Deb Boyle.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to the award of bids. Awards of bids?
Food service contract, Mark Stain.
Well, it just seems like yesterday we bid out the food service contract. In fact, it was two years ago, and I think you all know the status of that, we're not getting renewed by our current vendor, although they did bid, and it's interesting to note, they were the highest bidder. And I think they were doing it just to put a number on the table and kind of leave the district gracefully, so. But the process is highly regulated, regulated by National School Lunch Program through the Fed and also through Illinois State Board of Education. Pre-bid conference is required so that all bidders who are serious come to a pre-bid conference, understand the operations, and are able to ask questions. We had a public bid opening on April 27th. The lowest bid, actually, we received five bids. Lowest bid was from a company called Organic Life LLC. They're a relatively new company. I couldn't quite call them a startup, but they've, they're only extensive experience with a school district that's even close to us. They only have one, and that's Nile School Districts. They indicate there's 6,000 students for the two high schools. And they've, this will be their fifth year of working with that school. And we specifically put in, into the bid that we wanted someone with deep experience. Quest was not a startup either, but their, their experience became a factor for us, and we just wanted a stronger player to come in, and come into the district. Organic Life had three areas. There's seven or eight criteria areas that ISB asks us to develop criteria. They recommend some, but they also allow us to develop criteria, and we did that. And three of those areas did not pass for Organic Life. The first one was food quality, which you could tell they have not done a lot of National School Lunch Program bids. They, they're supposed to develop a 21-day menu. They gave us a 20-day menu. They had the same food offering for five days in a row for breakfast, things like that. It was a bagel and some other things, so it was very light. And so, there was a few things that made us right away see that they hadn't had a lot of experience in this area. The, the financial stability was a concern for us. They had less than $200,000 of cash on hand, which they're fairly small, at least the part that would handle our division, the division would handle us, was fairly small. And again, they just didn't have five years, more than five years' experience. We asked for a minimum of 10 with a high-volume enterprise. We don't want to be the biggest district that they do, or the, you know, the one that they're cutting their teeth in. And then, again, they were primarily in smaller schools, some, you know, 150-student districts, and they're, they're really kind of a small niche kind of, I believe, operator. It was my impression. But there were three areas that we could not pass them on, and so we went to the second lowest bidder, which was Chartwell's. Chartwell is a very large, it's Aramark size or even larger, I believe, contractor. They're pretty well-established in Illinois. We had a really good meeting with them today, just as, you know, making sure we're all on the same page, and had a, got a good feeling from them. They, where Quest was, actually, we believe their strength was in the non-NSLP market. They, right off the bat, they were looking for us to get off of the program. This, Chartwell says we're, they're, they're deep in either side, and we can run it so they could take us off if we wanted to at some point. But they are very strong in this area. In fact, one other districts that we, they noted was comparable was Community High School District 218, which is Richards High School, Shepherd High School, and Eisenhower High School. It's actually a community program there where they have enough kids that the entire student body can eat free under the program. Once you get to a certain level, I think it's beyond 50%, you can, you can opt to do that. And one purpose for doing that is the stigma of, of some kids that won't come up because, and be recognized even with a, a non-pay system like we have. If everybody's going up and getting free food, it's, it's one of the things that they do. So, they, so they have experienced at, I think, all levels, very deep experience with the National School Lunch Program. The, the increase was pretty heavy. It's a, it's a 25% increase in the meal pay rate that we will pay out. On the other side, though, what we're, we're charging has to go up anyways because our National School, we've had such very low bids. Let me just back up. It's 25% higher than what Quest was getting paid for it. Quest underbid the rest of the group by 18% when they came in, so we're really seeing back to kind of a normal price. We had two years of really substandard pricing, which now we're being compared to that for, for the new company coming in. So, we were expecting a pretty sizable increase, and also because we've had such low meal rates and we've been able to keep our prices low for students, we're actually making more money on the program than we're allowed to make on it because we're not, we're not paying enough out and we're not charging enough of the students. And, and so, the issue is that the federal government is saying, well, they're paying us reimbursement for meals that are higher than what we're charging, our full-paid students, and they won't allow us to do that. We have to charge our full-paid students higher amounts. And so, we were going to, we're going to have to increase it to a minimum of $2.75 from $2.65, which isn't much of a move, but based on the meal price, we probably should go as, maybe as high as 3.25. And there's, some of our feeders have higher prices than that for smaller lunch and for smaller kids. So, we, we would still be in kind of the normal market, but we're going to have a, a special meeting just with them to discuss that. We want to know how that would affect sales. We want to know how that would, we'll do a deeper comparison of the, the other high schools and elementaries, and we'll bring that back to you in June with a recommendation for final pricing. But it's going to go up because of the requirement by the government regardless. Even if we stayed with Quest, it was going to have to go up. So, again, we had a great meeting today. The, we're talking now, meeting today really covered the transition... The, they're talking now, meeting today really covered the transition. When Quest came in, there was a same kind of thing. A good number of the staffs were rehired by Quest. We think that might happen again now with Chartwell's. They, they did bid higher. They do have a higher rate of pay that they expect to be able to, to present to our employees, and they're getting. So, that should be a positive thing for them. And, so, it's, it's really kind of the best thing. We, when you have a outside contractor or vendor for this, if, if there's employees that we're not pleased with, we just, it's, it's very easy. Even if, even if they hire them, and then, too much from now, we decide, you know, we really don't think that person's working out, you just, you know, say, "We need a new person." They're just like bus drivers, you know? When you have a bad bus driver, you have somebody, you could just say, "We want that person out," and within a very short period of time, they'll be out. So, we will have pretty good control over our staff again, and we appreciate that part of it. So, basically, it's our recommendation that we approve Chartwell's. Their, their bid is, one point, $1,279,940, but that's based on an estimated number of meals served. It's the meal rate, actually, that is, is the, the lock-in factor here. They, everybody bids on a certain meal rate, based on the same estimated number. So, you have apples and, and apples to compare. And, the meal rate is, is what we would expect. And, actually, the meal rate for lunches is $2.67, and $1.48 for the breakfast. But, the, the bid can be approved at $1,279,940.
Oops.
Any questions?
No, I, I appreciate all the, all the information, and being timely, and not excited about the rates going up, but it seems that a lot of that's out of our control anyhow, so.
Is there any motion?
I would like, yes.
All right.
All right, so I'll move to accept the lowest responsible bid of $1,279,940 from Chartwell's to provide food management services for the 2016-17 fiscal year, and to also authorize administration to sign any necessary documents to accept and execute this five-year contract with Chartwell's.
I'll second that.
Carrie's seconding. Okay, any discussion?
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Carrie Pavasich?
Aye.
Rick Pavanado?
Aye.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Deb Boyle?
Aye.
Don Renner?
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka?
Aye. This is, thank you, voice-over-internet protocol?
I'll go to Jim Colajay for voice-over-internet protocols.
Voic.
Okay. Last couple years, we've been planning to replace our analog system, and I think we're finally gonna get there. rationale for the current system is to replace, its parts are now unavailable. We got through another year without any major catastrophes, so that's good. And, we're down to the last few weeks, so looking forward to replacement of the system. The voice-over IP is internet protocol system, utilizes network and internet connectivity to run the system instead of a traditional phone line. Some capabilities, I won't go through all of them, but the big ones, existing phones will be replaced. That's nearly 700 in this district, so it's a big number. Capability of our, our staff to receive voice messages, and also view it on their computers as emails. And, also, cell phone, they can link through their desk phone.
They'll never be able to-
Forward call through their cell phone as well. There are a couple. It's a complex project. In lieu of that, we hired a consultant. Dave Wilson, who's in the audience tonight with us, helped us, and was very instrumental in the planning of this project and preparing for implementation of this new system. It is complex. Also, our District 919 and Rod and his group, I'd like to thank them for their hard work and work throughout the summer, but they've done a great job, so appreciate everything. It's a technology-based system, so we can kinda not publicly bid and go through an RFP, a Request for Proposal. That's what we did. We can evaluate vendors based on criteria. I'll go through a couple of those in a moment. So, Dave from Wilson Consulting completed an examination of proposals based on these specifications we developed. Some of them were manufacturer restraint, under support, system configuration, system features, suitability of telephones themselves, and system cost and maintenance. And, I'll get back to the cost and maintenance near the end. So, we worked with Dave, establishing that criteria, and then, we had the bidders bring in the proposals. We reviewed every one of them. In my memo, there's a list of all the proposals that were received. Points were awarded to each vendor in certain categories. I won't, while I get done with all that detail. But, Midco was the highest point getter. It's the note we're currently working with, Midco, at this time, and we have been for a few years. They've been great with us in the point system. They had the highest at 1261. They also were the second highest at 1259. But, there's two software applications, the Enterprise and the Mitel UCC. And, what we feel is compatible, we wanna use is the Enterprise software application. That's our choice. Five-year system, that's what the proposal was for. Includes the initial cost, and then, five years of maintenance and software upgrades. This is crucial, 'cause a lot of times, you'll get a vendor in, in a contract with them, and they'll balloon those maintenance agreements. So, we wanted to see what the next five years would be, and apply that into the total bid. And, I'll explain how that's broken up as I go through the final request to recommend tonight. Cost of the system is, as I said, for the ASC T99, North High and South High. Includes installation, staff training, and one-year parts and labor warranty. So, after reviewing, we believe the Mitel phone system by Midco will meet or exceed our current future technology, our telecommunications requirements. And, this bid amount is much lower than our budget estimate for this project. So, we're recommending the voice-over-IP system replacement by Midco for Illinois, with the Enterprise software application for $257,405. I'll answer questions if I can. If it's tech-related, I might ask a call from Rod.
Do you think it'll all be done by the fall? Is that your installation goal?
We have a good plan. We'll have this going in mid-October. We'll fine-tune the training and how we wanna implement that to our staff. We're excited. We, Dave has done a lot of work in the field already, looking at what our needs will be as far as getting connections, and when we can get into classrooms and other areas. So, I think we're pretty much aggressive. I think we'll get this done in a good timeframe. We'll be ready to roll this out for the beginning of the school year.
Exciting. Well, I move that we have to have a motion first, and then, we can discuss it.
Carrie's moving.
Yeah, I move that we use Midco for this voice-over internet protocol.
Discussion done.
I just had a question. The Page 1 references a $304,000 figure, and Page 2 is recommending $257?
There's a difference of about $47,000 there. That's the five-year maintenance and software upgrades. We're breaking that off of the price and going with the $257,000, because that's the initial cost. That $47,000, we spanned out over the five years.
Okay.
We currently, in our own budget, budgets, have bought $12,000, $13,000 that we already paid Midco for the maintenance of our current system. So, it's kind of an offset, we're paying that $47,000 out over the course of the next year.
Thanks.
So, my question to that, we have that in writing then, too, so it won't go over then, no?
Correct. That was the basis of the RFP, and to lock them in for that agreement. So, now, they can't go above and beyond that for a period of time.
Questions, any other questions or comments?
Sounds good.
Good job.
Can we have a motion on the floor?
Carrie Pavasich?
Aye.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Deb Boyle?
Aye.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Don Renner?
Aye.
Rick Pavanado?
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka?
Hi, Carrie's, thank you. Baseball safety in the new softball.
Yeah, Jim.
Okay. Softball and baseball fields. I have been busy. Last year, we put some new netting up at North High School, Varsity softball field, if you remember that. This year, we're looking at doing the Varsity baseball field at South High School, along with the, or the softball field at South. And, I'll explain further in a moment. We had six trusted vendors, two bid proposals, one we're familiar with, because they did the work at North last year. Scope is the first base and third base lines and backstop at South. Also included, the scope work is the softball field, first base and third base line on the Varsity field. As you are aware, there is a net on the third baseline existing, sagging and deteriorating, and also at 30 feet. I'd like for it to be at 40 feet, consistent to what we have at North. And, I think that fare well with some consistency on both sides. So, I'm incorporated doing both fields, redoing the poles, and that's at 40 feet for the softball field, 50 for the baseball field, and redoing both. Reviewed scope work with the vendor. They meet or exceed our needs. The price is given, estimated from the project. So, the recommendation is to approve a little bit by North Shore Netting from Highland, Illinois, for replacement of the 77,000.
I move that we use North Shore netting for netting around the South softball and baseball fields.
Thank you, Carrie.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Julia.
Ready for somebody else to do it.
Any discussion?
Yes, I have a question.
Spread it off.
The, the current Varsity softball field ahead is this netting that is deteriorating. When did we put that in?
Over eight years ago, at least eight, maybe more. I believe it was when I first got into the district, the first or second year. But, also, and that's a good point to ask that question, I just-
I was wondering how long they passed. Also, with the, the height of them, I was wondering, like, are there, are there netting that can come down? Or is that something that stays up all the time? And, what, with the weather, what happens with that? Like, with, you know, horrible storms and things like that, what happens?
And, that brings us back to the 2011 tornado.
Yes.
Feel that the poles were bent a little bit. Not noticed at that point, but there was some possible damage to the poles that exist, the three that are there now, that bent a little bit. But, the netting lifespan's usually around 10 years. You can bring it up and down. That one was a permanent fixture. So, it's probably getting close to its lifespan. But, at 30 feet, I'm just not comfortable. And, I don't know how many ball balls been hit on 63rd, as over the last few years. But, at 40 feet, I'm much more comfortable knowing that that's gonna take those high lives.
I was only wondering, with just the height and the storms that came through, what kind of damage would be done, and what kind of replacement costs would come with, something like that?
Actually, for that, that's like the fourth piece. I did it as an alternate on this bid, because I knew that wouldn't be a huge cost, but I wanted to make sure I was within a price for the budget. And, it came in at a very low cost. To do that last piece, replacing those three poles and putting that new net in at 40 feet, so I thought it was a good purchase for the district at this time. Just get a uniform. There's softballs being hit into the task cards front and softball field now, from the first base line. So, you got a 40-foot, you got a 30-foot, it's kinda falling, it's sagging. It would have to take some work to get that back up, and probably have a year or two left. And, so that was a good time for us.
Is that something that might be covered by insurance? Or no? You can tell me know, it's all right.
The claim, the claim for all of that tornado damage, and you'll see when I talk about the sign, 'cause that's kind of the last piece-
Right, it goes into it.
-of this claim, that's still out there and open, waiting for us to get.
Does take a while.
It was part of the claim back in 2011, when it happened, and-
Okay.
That was that.
I'll put that back in.
It's all right. I just was curious.
Is this within the budget? I mean, is this a life safety issue?
Oh.
Um, no, outside.
The question was, what, was this a life safety?
Is this a life safety issue?
No, it's, it's not covered in a life safety fire plan.
It is, it is, if you're driving down 63rd Street. It's your life safety.
From South High School, the district office felt this was a high-priority capital projects, and that's the funding that comes, that's ours.
I think so. Any other questions? Do we got a motion on the table?
Carrie Pavasich?
Aye.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Deb Boyle?
Aye.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Don Renner?
Aye.
Rick Pavanado?
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka?
Hi, thank you, Carrie. It's now the exterior ramp and north entry stairs, concrete work.
Okay, and there's been a new development in this, oh, now we'll get to that in a moment. First, I was saying, we put the documents together with White and Company, cost proposals for the replacement of two areas, and a, a piece of a third area, and I'll get to that in a moment as well. This is for the stairs, the north stairway is directly next to the dock area at South, and also the underground track, concrete ramp, going to the underground track area at South High as well. The last piece is a small piece of the concrete work for the sign at South High. So, what we did was, we bid packaged this together. So, it's about 10,000 of this money going towards the signed base for the concrete. Pre-bids were received. The concrete that's on the stairs, I don't know if you've been at South, this has been about a year or so now, that it's really gotten to a level of water standing and deterioration and cracking. And, you walk through with White and Company for life safety. I picked on it, I did, by the way, and they did as well. We did put this project under life safety, submitted to the ROE and state, and it was approved. Also, the deterioration on the ground track, over the concrete that's chipping off, it's gotten pretty bad in the last year as well. So, I'm very happy to do this work this summer. And, I think the safety factor is huge on both areas for, for everyone. The developing news this afternoon, so as you can see, the, initially, the low bidder was kind of an old construction company at $221,000. I did a review, it was a little difficult, gave them an opportunity, in fact, they've given them a lot of opportunities in the past week, up to 5:00 PM tonight, to produce valid documents, bid bond, and criteria specified in the bid. And, the bid bond that I received, the second one, 'cause I refused the first one, was not notarized and didn't have a corporate seal. Their profit and loss statement was adjusted by handwritten numbers, and the tax requirements were outdated, and did not still require any study. But, so many red flags. So, I talked with Mr. Stalen briefly before the speeding, and told him that was gonna disqualify Continental Construction, we're gonna call into our attorney, and we'll speak with them tomorrow, just to make sure we have our ducks in a row. We do. So, I, I'm not comfortable recommending, as I originally did, wrote in this memo, Continental Construction. So, I would like to recommend Parkway Formingham Company from South Elgin, Illinois, for the work, be done, the concrete at North, the north stairwell and exterior underground track at South, for the total amount of $242,700.
So-
Have we used them before?
Oh, I've worked with Parkway before.
Do we know that their paperwork and their bonding will be acceptable?
I've already checked it and reviewed. In fact, when they first submitted, I'm talking Continental right now, their, their bid, there was some skeptical things that I followed up. I wanted to give them every opportunity to be the low bidder and come up with the documentation. They gave me the runaround for a few days, I gave them timeframes, and I finally agreed that I would wait till 5:00 PM tonight, to get full documentation that I needed. In the meantime, in this past week- In the meantime, in this past week, I scope reviewed with Parkway, and they have all the proper paperwork that is acceptable by the district, and their company I've worked with.
And the concrete for the sign, is that the same arrangement?
Concrete for the sign is going to be coming out of the $242,700. It's about $10,000 worth of work. The rest of it is for the two big projects at South. I just incorporated that it's onsite, we might as well do all three at one time. We'll get a better price, which we did, I believe, in a whole. We're still within budget on the $242, and this is coming out of life safety funding.
Good work.
I was going to say, is it a motion, Julia?
I'll move to approve the bid submitted by Parkway Forming from South Elgin for concrete work to the north stairway next to your underground track ramp at South High School campus in the amount of $242,700.
Second.
More discussions?
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Don Renner?
Aye.
Terry Pavisic?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Deb Boyle?
Aye.
And Nancy Cupca?
Hi, thank you, passes the cafeteria.
The documents for the cafeteria, handrails, as you know, there's three tiers.
Yes.
Cafeteria. And for three years that I've been in this position, I've been very leery about the liabilities of those and the people that have seen step off and or trip.
I think we all have.
So in our life safety review, we wanted to incorporate and see if we can get approved for some funding, put up some handrails. We received four bids for this project. Review the scope. The scope of work is removable handrails, three by three by three, so three feet high, three feet wide. There's about 15 on each tier. As I said, the remove also will drop it to sleeves. They also have a mesh in between the square of the handrail. So we can remove them if we need, but we feel that the three-foot height is acceptable for most or all functions at South, and that be a visual impairment, meaning if you're on a level and you're looking down, three feet of handrail is going to be in front of you, but it's not going to impair your visual as you look down. In fact, we believe that if a person was sitting in front of you, that would be a bigger visual impairment. So that's how we came up with the three feet high. This was identified by the ROE and state as a life safety project, so we had the capability of bonding to fund this. So we'll use the life safety funds to support it. The bid price is within our budget for this project, so we are recommending to approve the bid submitted by K&amp;K Iron Works, McCook, Illinois, for installation of new handrails in the cafeteria at South High School in the amount of $69,000 given.
I move that we approve the bid submitted by K&amp;K Iron Works, McCook, Illinois, for the installation of new handrails in the cafeteria at South High School campus in the amount of $69,000.
Second.
And before we vote, I'll just say that, you know, I end up, as you see some of my emails, I end up asking questions ahead of time sometimes about these things. And Jim, and it always seems to come back with a more than satisfactory answer, that they've researched things. So the discussion about the sightlines, that was one of the first, you know, how the architect thinks, right? I started thinking about what this is going to mean. And he told me they had extensive conversations about this, and I appreciate that he welcomes my questions about this, and I love the fact that it ends up demonstrating what a thorough job our staff does. So I just wanted to bring that up now.
Any other comments?
I was just, just a comment, the huge difference in the bids. It was pretty stunning.
Look at the last, look at who the last bidder is, too.
That ring a bell?
That's when they were going to make the money back, okay.
Interesting.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Don Renner?
Aye.
Terry Pavisic?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Deb Boyle?
Aye.
And Nancy Cupca?
Hi, thank you, passes, and we move on to the sign.
All right, I've been many years.
Haven't we all?
Why'd you have?
You still look good, Jim.
Okay. We're finally here, putting a sign up at South. We created bid documents for the sign that was damaged by the tornado several years ago. I came to you in December with some options, and I appreciate your feedback with that. And option one was the original sign construction that I worked with White on. But also, after getting some feedback prior to December from the board, I looked at possibly doing another option, and I presented that to you in December. Just in case you forgot what it looked like, there it is. So after the board meeting, my task was to see if the village would approve this, one, and two, talk to the insurance company. I went to the village with the plans and specifications for this, and they were happy to approve it.
They were thrilled, weren't they? How nice.
And they, you know, gave me a permit already. So we have a permit to build, that's good news. We don't have to go through any more check over the village. Then the second piece of this was the cost, and with the insurance company supporting the cost and talking with them over the phone and emails back and forth, they will. They funded us two bid dollars.
That's great.
The full amount, so we can be reimbursed for everything. With that said, there are three bidders that we're going to work to. One is for the sign, one is for electric, and one is for masonry. And then there's the concrete $10,000 that we discussed with the concrete work. So there's kind of two different toes, so I'll go through that with you. For the insurance reimbursement request that I'll put in, with the total amount, and that's included in this amount that I'm asking for the board to approve, is $10,000 more. So the true amount to the insurance company is $69,082, and that's still slightly lower than what we discussed in December as a concept budget number. So looking at the vendors outside of Concord, it's the first time I'll be working with them, but they were determined to fill out the bidding requirements that we met with them, and they have met them all. I've worked with the other two companies, so all past qualifications. And looking here if I missed something, but I think that the piece for the insurance is key, because what the finish that reimbursement we can possibly put in for the full amount. And that will happen. We are recommending to approve the combined list of low acceptable bidders for the aggregate amount of $59,082.
So, go ahead, Terry.
You should, Terry.
I move that we accept the bid for the South High sign, as long as there's the electrical, we'll accommodate a electronic sign for the future.
In the future? I'll second that.
And I just would like to say that it's pretty great that this is being covered by our insurance, which really, you know, I know we had, one of the concerns about using this sign was going to be the cost and whether or not we could justify spending that much money. And in fact, we're not. The insurance company is covering the cost of this. So this was worth taking a little bit of extra time to get it right. So thank you.
And I do like the design. I think it'll be a very nice accent to our building.
Is the insurance going to pay for the cement work as well?
Yes.
I wasn't sure I heard that, because of 60. Okay.
When can we expect the unveiling of this sign?
I think we should have a ribbon cutting ceremony.
August.
August.
I think we should get a bunch of strobes and flashing lights and everything.
Yeah, Hollywood. Are we going to landscape around it also? Are we going to landscape around it also?
Yes, they'll be landscaping around it. If you remember, it's 30 feet from 63rd, 90 feet per ton. So that's where its home will be. I also, there was an alternate, let me say it, the lighting unit is LED lighting.
Fabulous.
And then there was a little extra for a locking mechanism that I wanted to have on there, so be safe.
We couldn't be vandalized.
No vandals, and down it goes.
And this is tornado proof, right?
No, 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 no. Because we might get an electronic sign.
As a compromise, there's a digital robot that likes to come out and put the lettering on this sign.
It is.
There we go.
It is. I was going to say a drone.
That's creative thinking. I love it.
I think we have a motion on the table.
You do.
Terry Pavisic?
Aye.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Deb Boyle?
Aye.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Don Renner?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
And Nancy Cupca?
Hi, it passes.
And for those at the village, please, we would like an electronic sign at both North and South High.
Bolt purchasing.
Okay, this is it, the finale.
Last but not least.
It's been very successful.
This is great.
Well, about eight years now that we've been bolt purchasing custodial supplies and ground supplies, but we've implemented even more filters, pool supplies. So we have many things that we bid publicly, and I'll tell you, each year, we get more vendors, and it becomes more aggressive. This year is the same, 14 vendors submitted bids to the supplies. The combined total this year is roughly $24,000 less than last year.
That's amazing.
There's a piece in that, a little bit of salt. We use a little less salt this year than we normally do, but nowhere near $24,000, maybe a couple dollars of that. So we're familiar with all of these companies. It's fantastic that we do this, and each year, I try to add a couple more products to it. They're all green products on the cleaning supplies. We stay consistent at both schools with our cleaning habits and what we use, same with our grounds. People that are working out there, we're using the same fertilizer. It's wonderful, our community, this district, and I really enjoy bringing these spucks together and adding things to it and not having to purchase things throughout the course of the year consistently and overspending. And we have stored space for this, and it's worked out beautifully. So all good from my perspective. We reviewed all the companies, and we feel all the low prices are acceptable and the vendors meet our requirements. So we're recommending to the board to approve the work projects for the custodial maintenance supplies to all the vendors in the aggregate amount of $115,514.87.
Is that a penny more?
A penny more.
All right.
Richie, I feel dying to make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Please, somebody, yeah.
I'll make the motion to award the contract for custodial maintenance supplies to the vendors that are listed above in the aggregate amount, $115,514.87.
I'll second that.
Well done.
Good job.
I just, quick comment, that bundling these things together saves our district a lot of money.
$24,000.
And some of these other bids, Jim had done that as well. So, good stuff.
Good job. Absolutely, great job, Jim.
Deb Boyle?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Don Renner?
Aye.
Terry Pavisic?
Aye.
And Nancy Cupca?
Hi, it passes, thank you. We move on to new business, the June 6th meeting?
The administration's reviewed the possible gen item for the June 6th meeting. We believe we could easily transfer those to the business meeting later in the month. So we recommend that the board consider not holding.
Think about that.
Historically, we've never had a June meeting.
That's right.
But we've scheduled one the last four, year or four years, just in case we had to have one.
I'm good with that.
Anybody want to meet June 6?
Why are you looking at me?
Don't phrase it that way.
Where? Right.
Yeah, it's...
Okay, so moving on to the second reception of visitors. This is the second reception of visitors, which is intended for audience members to address the board on any topic pertaining to Community High School District 99. Does anybody wish to? Hearing none? We'll move on to communication and announcement. Did you want to say something? Nope, you sure? Ah, it's your turn. We'll give you three minutes. Okay, moving on, Len.
I've been giving the board written briefs about communications on the annual Lend and K-angels. We have a meeting Friday morning, in which we'll continue to discuss the ongoing issue in Springfield. There's the issue of the overall budget, there's the paramount issue of the K-12 budget. That would be a disaster for any school district in the state if the legislature did not pass that. And in our case, we were looking at about $15 billion, we would not have access to that in the state. Other school districts would clearly not be able to open because you don't have the money, and part of that is because that affects access to federal funds as well as state funds. There are also some other issues going on in Springfield. One of them that I've been sharing information with the board about is funding. And in fact, Mark is one of the experts that have been called by Lend and other organizations to provide input. I think it's passed out. So good to you tonight.
Yes.
Do you want to review that at all?
Yeah, I thought I'd just tie this in and then explain why I threw it in front of you. Thanks, Mark. The, it's this brochure, which is actually an article put together by Mike Jacoby and Michelle Mangan. Michelle Mangan worked with the two creators of what was originally called Evidence-Based Funding Formula. There's a few schools on the east coast, states on the east coast that have used this formula, and they think very successfully. And it would change things in Illinois, and I thought this explains it pretty good. And this actually was designed for business managers, guys that work with it all the time, so this a little bit may get a little deep. But I thought I'd just give you a quick overview of the key things that I think are important. Mark mentioned that I was the Lend representative, it was a committee of about 10. It started with two board members, one from Barrington, 220, and another from Oak Park, that really heard about the evidence-based model, knew that Vision 2020, which is another group I was on and still am a part of, but had been talking about getting an evidence-based model going in Illinois. Part of it is for political reasons. The current funding system we have isn't really broken, but it's not as transparent, and it's easier to manipulate, actually, because there's five or six different funding sources that any one of those in a particular year, even though they may have a tie to the population of children that are tied to, let's say, driver's ed for as a matter of whatever your costs were for driver's ed in a particular year, that could go up or down based on the number of kids that participated for your school. But it also could go up and down because the state may decide that's not a big priority, and like they have in the last year, they've reduced that to 70%, 60% at times, just because it's not as high a priority. Well, it's taking all of those individual pieces and really dropping it into one main formula that will become unique for each district. So every district, based on the actual ELL kids, special need kids, poverty level that you have, the enrollment that you have, will, using all the different pieces, like how many teachers on a common core class, like a, not common core, but a core class, we call it, forget common core, a core class, what the basic need is, and it's estimated based on, you know, K3, K... based on, you know, K-3, K-4 through 8, and then high schools, there's different levels for each of those, so it's kind of putting together a district from scratch. And what Vision 2020 has done and also through Luda and Lend, they vetted this a little bit to make it right for Illinois, because the schools that, the states that were doing this on the east coast are rather small. There's one in Wyoming, I guess there's Vermont, and there's some smaller states, and so they wanted to make sure it still made sense. And actually, Michelle Mangan studied under some of the original founders of this idea and was a great resource for us. So, the idea here is to put together something that's a little more transparent, a little harder to manipulate at the state level, and there's, I'm sure many of you have heard of Menard Senate Bill 231, it's already passed the Senate, hopefully it won't get through the House, but we're presenting it as an alternative. We kind of pushed it further ahead, the implementation date for this would not be next year, but the following year. Menard bill has technically only one year hold harmless and then would start to deplete. This is, this Vision 2020 and this evidence-based model has a permanent hold harmless, and actually what it would do is, once you get all of the pieces, it really, again, has an individual adequacy level, funding level for each school, and based on what your EAV is in your district and what your capacity is to fund it locally, and some schools can't even afford 1% of an adequacy model, and so there's some schools that are really down at the far end, they break it into four different groupings. If you're less than 30%, able to provide 30% of that adequacy level, less than 60%, less than 90%, and then over 90%. We would actually fall right towards the middle between the less than 60 and the next group, so we're kind of in the middle, and it will change each time you update numbers. So, every year you could fall into a slightly different group or move up or down. And the lower two tiers, the first thing is, everybody is held harmless for what they received in the prior year, so that nobody goes backwards, and really, for us, that's about, the suburban schools, that's primarily what we're fighting for, just don't take any more away and give us something we can plan on permanently. And so then, the lowest two tiers would get funded with any new money that comes into the system. To really fully fund this, it would be nine and a half to $10 billion, and we know that that's not going to happen, but it's a number, they're hoping, the target right now is to try and get $4 billion over the next five years, and there is talk about, you know, reprioritizing education down in Springfield, and we're hoping that this may spark it. Some people will say that the current funding formula isn't broken if they fully funded it, and a lot of us would be happy if they just fully funded the current system, but honestly, the political side is this, that there's been a lot of bashing of it, saying that it's a broken system. Well, we feel the broken part has been the funding side, not necessarily the structure, but there's enough of a feeling that we need to throw this out and start anew, so that's why the Menard bill is catching a little bit of gumption or traction, and we think this one, very possibly, if anything's ever going to change, this could do it. Vision 2020's piece of this is that there's about, I think it's 540 schools in the state that are part of Vision 2020. So, there's a lot of schools that are going to support it, and the idea is that we can get 90 to 100% of the schools, we'll have a lot of people talking to their local people, their local representatives, and have some push on this. So, I think I covered some of the funding tiers. It is indexed, the key, that's one thing I didn't want, it's indexed for regional cost factors and our grouping in DuPage, in Lake County, would be the, 1.2 would be the highest factor, and so P R is about the average of teacher salary, of different cost factors that go into schools for operation, and so in our case, we'd bid 1.2 times that factor because that's the high end of it, and the low end is 0.8. So, there's some schools that, you know, you buy a house and for $100,000, it would cost $300,000 up here, so there's the regionalization to it, which we like, but there's some understanding of that. So, we're hopeful that at least, you know, this is a serious proposal, so there's a lot of detail in here and a lot of pieces, maybe to help you understand it. You're going to hear more about evidence-based funding in the upcoming months.
Thank you. Julia Sessie. Well, thank you to the board for reappointing me to the Board of Control and then to the governing board too, and I think that board is going to be meeting, I believe, in June, it depends on whether we can get the budget together by that time, but I will share that news with you, and we're really hopeful that that model will be a much better model for SASSID, to become a self-governing unit. The most exciting news, I think I've mentioned it for several months, is that they actually have signed a lease for the new building. It's at 2900 Argon Avenue in Lyle, it's for about 1,900 and change square feet plus some storage, it's going to be great. It will allow SASSID to combine two other offices, actually three offices, into one space, it's office space, and that means the check center where the administrative offices have been will now be devoted to all classrooms, because there are a couple of programs that are growing and that need some space, plus there was one place that was no longer really habitable for our special ed people, so, or offices for that matter, so very excited about that, and over the 10-year period, we are going to be saving something like $600,000, I think.
That's a lot of money.
Exactly, it's still a little iffy. The rent starts out at about $9.60 a square foot, it grows in 10 years, it is a 10-year lease, by the way, to $18 a square foot, it goes up by about 2% a year, but I think it's going to be really a very, very good move for SASSID, and I know there will be some sort of ribbon cutting or open house or something when they move in, they're hoping to be in by the first of the year, but as we know, building permits can be slow to receive, and the landlord has agreed to do a whole lot of rehabbing of the building for us, plus $150,000 toward new furniture and moving expenses, so it was a deal that we couldn't refuse. Great parking, very accessible, so we're very excited. So, I'll let you know when that great grand opening is going to be.
Is there anything on the Illinois Humanities Council?
I was unable to attend the last, the meeting that was in Springfield to do some lobbying because I was out of town because of our family emergency, so I don't have a lot to report. They're having their big fundraising luncheon this week and they are honoring Dr. Walter Massey, who was the director of Argon for a time and was sort of in the district, and so I'll report, I'm not going to be able to go, but I will report on that. And they are moving ahead with their public discussions on education in the state, so I'll have more to report then too.
Thanks, Julia. 99 Education Foundation?
Yes, we just supported the luncheon that you went to.
Tenable Futures with the Chamber of Commerce?
You know, the mind is a terrible place, but anyway, we had a lot of really talented students come through and Mike attended and Dr. Donald and Jill was there, and our speaker was the same speaker we've had for the last three years, and so, he's good, and so that's what we did with the.
It's a great program. And we've retained a consultant to commence the process of searching for an executive director.
Oh, good.
Full time?
Part time.
Full time. Thank you. IASB, anything?
I have nothing at this time.
Okay, thanks, Deb. Well, we do have a couple of upcoming board meetings, June 3rd will be graduation, June 6th we will not meet, June 20th we will meet here at 7:30 PM. Anything else anybody wants to bring up? Otherwise, we'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Move that we adjourn.
Mike, a motion? Terry, seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
See you, agree.